That is not.
No. This is Holcomb?
They bought that, their rent, from Keith Shafer. And I'll bet you a dollar to a dog to that was. Lucky it's not come full of grass and weeds and everything else. I'm just assuming.
We need to look for new sand.
I know where it's at.
The H and H?
Well, silicon sand to get it out of. We need that good quality of sand to get it out of sand. It's what it is fraying.
Masonary sand?
No.
No?
No, it's a different sand.
Okay.
Kind sugar.
Okay.
You get like what they use fracking these oil wells instead of.
Yeah, these guys are fire. Look at that.
It's dosy. Excuse my language.
Dosy.
Proof in the puddle.
Yeah. We'll go back out there again.
All right, I have six o'clock. Does everybody else have six o'clock?
Yep.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. I'd like to welcome everybody to, um, Guyman City Council meeting. We'll start out with a prayer from Jeremiah, Jeremy Herrera from the Methodist Church. Everybody else, thank you.
Good evening, let's pray. Gracious and Almighty God, we come before you this evening with gratitude for the opportunity to serve the people of Guyman. Thank you for the gift of this community, for its diversity, its strength, and the hard-working hearts of those who call it home. We ask for your guidance and wisdom in this meeting. Help each council member to lead with integrity, humility, and a spirit of cooperation. May their discussions be filled with respect and their decisions be guided by justice, compassion, and a desire to promote the common good. Bless this city with safety, prosperity, and peace. Strengthen those who serve from public servants and teachers to first responders and local business owners. May we always seek to uplift one another and steward this community with honor. In your holy name we pray, amen.
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 Mr. Idson, will you leave the question?
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I call this meeting to order. Okay, so the second item on the agenda is attendance rule call. Mr. Alvedres?
Present.
Mr. Idson?
Here.
Mr. Hilton?
Present.
Ms. Sanchez?
Present.
Ms. Hoffman?
Here.
Mr. Petty?
Here.
Mr. Shannon?
Here.
Mr. Peterson? We've got a quorum. All right, uh, third item on the agenda is public comments. Do we have anybody sign in for public comments? Nope, okay. Number four, approval of the consent agenda.
I make a motion we approve the consent agenda, item four.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Sanchez?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Hilton?
Aye.
We've got four ayes. Agenda item number five, discussion and possible action to approve resolution number twenty-five dash zero nine, a resolution of the city of Guyman adopting supplement number three to the municipal code of ordinances. Mr. Shannon, would you like to elaborate?
Yes, uh, Ms. Vice Mayor, um, this is something, all the previous ordinances that has been passed prior to, basically it's codified and put in the book, so this is what we're doing. When I say the book, the big, uh, the big rule ordinance book, so.
Plenar discussion?
I make a motion that we, uh, approve resolution number twenty-five dash zero nine, a resolution of the city of Guyman adopting supplement number three to the municipal code of ordinances, item five.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Hilton?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
We've got four ayes. Agenda item number six is discussion and possible action to approve resolution number twenty-five dash one zero, adopting a revised fee schedule for the city of Guyman, which includes revised soccer field rental rates and utility rates. Mr. Shannon, do you want to elaborate?
Two parts, uh, we'll, we'll discuss, uh, part one, I'll, I'll call it part one is the, uh, Nass Soccer Complex. If you remember, I had it was tabled, oh, sometime back in year twenty twenty-four, bring it back up, uh, there was a lot of discussion, uh, a lot of misinformation, but, uh, basically what the city of Guyman is trying to do is, is capitalize on the, um, tournaments, tournament play, uh, cause the field is being used, it's being used, which is a great thing. What we're trying to do, uh, before long, we're gonna have to probably spend some, uh, capital, and, uh, we feel like staff feels like the five dollars admission fee is, uh, applicable, uh, start building up a fund so we can start, uh, making needed repairs, especially when it comes times to repair or replace the, the turf. We've already seen just a little bit of vandalism happening out there, unfortunately, that's just started. Also, and correct me, George, if I'm wrong, about, about the last year, we've seen some major vandalism, but, uh, uh, but that is part one. Part two is our utility resolution twenty-four oh five, adopted in September, if you remember right, when we increased the rates, it was agreed upon at that time to every year, instead of just hitting the customers all at once in five or six years, is base the increases off of the CPI, the Consumer Price Index. This year, established by the federal government is two point nine percent, so. Which is fairly cheap.
These fees, um, are they, they're applicable to Kids Inc.? Is Kids Inc. ever gonna be able to use those fields?
Oh, yeah, they could use them, uh, if they, uh, if they have tournament, tournament play is only time that, they can go out there and play today, tomorrow, have practice, but when they hold major tournaments, that's when the, the gate fees are enacted.
Major tournaments being, so not regularly scheduled games? Cause there are those, right?
Yeah, so.
And then there's.
Kids Inc. hadn't, had, they, to my knowledge, the Kids Inc. quit using the facility.
They did.
They did. Uh, well, they practice out there a little bit, but, uh, so the difference between a tournament and a league, a league happens over like a month or multiple weeks of play. A tournament is more like a three to four day weekend or two day weekend play, so.
Yeah.
So it would just be tournaments then?
Cause there, there, there's a SOP, uh, being wrote, but, uh, that, that's a good, we need to distinguish between league play and tournament play. Good, good, good suggestion. Has that been done, staff? I know, I'm looking for somebody. Yep. Just tournament play.
So tournament play is it, so they, they can request the field and then the fee is assessed to the spectators, not the players?
Spectators.
Who's going to run the gates?
City staff.
Cause it, I mean, it, it does get used quite a bit, but it gets abused some too.
Oh, it, it, unfortunately, it, uh, the abuse is just starting. And I think, uh, and not picking on just the tournament play, but, uh, having city present, uh, there and people, uh, I think, uh, it, it should take care of it.
So this five dollar fee, it is a one day fee pass?
That's right, if the tournament starts eight o'clock in the morning, it's good old day.
It's not a every game fee, whatever.
Yeah, I think having staff out there enforcing rules and.
Yes.
I know we have a no pets.
Right, no pets, no chewing gum, yeah.
Sunflower seeds, all that.
Oh, yes.
That's not allowed.
Correct.
Ginger, do you want to kind of talk a little bit about the concession stand on this? Cause that, that's in there as well, which is hard, cause we, we had already talked about it a little bit before.
So, really, with concession stand on tell, it'll be very similar to, we've discussed it previously about, um, whenever they, it'll stay the same, it'll stay exactly what we have, but you have to go through and you have to book it. And that's what, we have one individual that currently will do that, um, they would book it, but we have through the same application, we have the app set up to where, um, it's basically formed like a concession stand style, except for you're not having to go in and change a menu on that. So let's say the individual comes out there to pay, and you wanna pay by card at the concession stand, you could just solely take card only, instead of having to worry about cash. But what it does is gives them dollar amounts in there, so we'll say my order comes up to four dollars, there's a two dollar tab, there's a one dollar tab that can set, and they can do it that way, versus saying, you know, we're changing a menu for somebody. So, um, that's the benefit of having that site set up that way. But really, other than that, they just have to come in and, and do the same thing that they're currently doing, and they just set it up and reserve it. It does pay through to the city, and so the city would have to reimburse, like they, they would do the percentage that we currently collect, and then they would do the reimbursement to the individual running the concession stand. But there has also been talk about, um, looking at, seeing what having a contract would look like as well with, with an entity or an individual, so not to take that off the table, but that is currently how, you know, moving forward until we figure some of those things out out there and get the bugs out of it, that's what that looks like at the moment, so. But other than that, the app has ran really smooth, not to kind of go into the other areas, but the app has run smooth, we, we used it last year at the pool, it worked really well. This year, um, it's set up, they, they made us re-sign in, they, they set it up amazingly. So I think it's gonna be smoother than what it went last year even with the pool, so that's that idea.
So, um, moving forward with the tournament stuff, will it be, you have to pay electronically or can it do cash and electronic?
Um, you could, ideally, you would want to, to be able to, you would hope that you could get away from having to worry about cash, but you can do them both, you can, um, have the individual pay and then you count them inside of the app. So what this does is so the employees that will be maintaining the gate, they have an employee account, and so for every game, they'll pull up that game inside of their account, and they can either, um, scan with their device, or the individual that comes up that has purchased tickets, they can automatically, at the gate, they can, um, you know, acknowledge that they're coming in and check that ticket off, and then it keeps it posted in there for them. But then to answer like the question of like an all-day pass to, let's say somebody leaves, or let's say somebody comes up and they have, they cannot find their ticket on their phone, that's as simple as typing in their name of the purchase, whoever made that purchase. So if, like say my mom purchased me a ticket and it's waiting at the gate, all I have to do is have them type in my mother's name, and up that ticket will pop up, and then you can renew it, and you can validate that ticket right there as well, so it's a, it's a pretty smooth system.
So going forward as well, um, you, every, all reservations for the field will be on the app?
They can, absolutely, we've set it up, we just have not moved forward yet, so just wanna make sure that, um, it has a sample over well before we move on.
I think allowing cash is just gonna cause issues in the.
Yeah, we, uh, I think the goal is to really just stay away from cash and just try to go card only, just because it is a hassle, it's a hassle to have to get a cash back. Of course, there's always issues that can happen, sometimes we can miscount, and, you know, things happen, so, anyway, but that's pretty much it, I think it's gonna be smooth.
Does the city have, like Venmo, Cash App, or anything like that, that sort of electronic stuff?
Uh, no, but inside of the app, it, I mean, it'll tell you like what all payments it, it takes inside of there. So if they have a Venmo or Cash App, they, like we have a debit card.
Yeah.
That's pretty much the way it works. But once they set it up, I mean, I have it set up in mind, that's how we go to my grandkids' games, I have it set up in mind, once you enter your information in there, create your account, you don't ever have to go back in there and do it unless you have a card expired or something like that, um, and, and those moments, that's when we do an update, but it's, I mean, it's very easy to operate as well. And we'll have QR codes set up, I mean, if that's, you know, if everything runs as according and, and we have council's approval, we'll have the QR codes placed out there, so that way they can just scan it at the gate, and they don't have to worry about that side either, they can be doing that before they come in, and it'll be available on the website, so.
Will, will it be going cashless this summer?
Um, we're, it's a goal, I, I don't know how well we can get to the goal, but we, we want to, for sure, that's definitely a direction we've been setting. Last year, I hated the, the fact that we utilized them as the, you have to have a test trial, and that's where we use, we utilize the pool as our, as our getting big, basically.
So you said the Kids Inc. does practice sometimes on the field?
Yeah, they already have a.
And they don't, and they don't play games on it no more?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
And what if they, what if something happens, or too many teams or something like that, and they need to utilize the field?
Um, so the way that the fields are lined out is by, by field one, two, and three, um, and so a reservation would be made per that field, so if, let's say somebody already, let's say a lapse in time happens, we would hope that the game would finish timely, and we know that things do happen out there, but that would be whoever's the, our gatekeeper as well, is also monitoring the playtime out there. And if there's downtime, the other good news to that is George has plenty of things for them to do.
Does a Kids Inc. charge, or does a Kids Inc. organization get charged to utilize the fields during league time, their leagues?
Um, so are you saying like if somebody's on one field playing league play?
Yeah, so if their field gets flooded, damaged, whatever, could ever go wrong, and they needed to utilize our fields for, uh, their spring league, whatever?
It's certainly something, I mean, we've, we've made some exceptions in the past for certain things, especially in an install like that, it would definitely be up to Mike to, you know, come in and visit with him and let him know, you know, this is what's happened with our field and, and, you know.
It says, it says here, yeah, five oh one C three.
Yeah.
Yeah.
None.
In the fee schedule, so.
Oh, does it?
Free use of organizations.
I wasn't sure if it was listed.
Free use of field, perfo exemption.
That is what I, that's.
I mean, we'll get some backlash in the beginning, but once it's established, I think it'll, everything will run smoothly and there'll be a process to it, and there'll be some policing of the area while all this is going on.
Well, I think if the public understood, you know, I know that, I know that they have had access to see some of those photos, but, you know, those were the nice ones, and that's what a lot of people don't understand, those were probably.
They didn't see the graffiti, the graffiti ones and all that other stuff.
Yeah, they, they got the cleanest ones, our, our guys do, um, they take care of things that no human being should have to do, and that's asking a lot, and so I say that with all respect for those guys, because they go in there and all out, at times probably should be wearing a hazmat suit, and that's the clean version, I won't elaborate anymore on it, but there are times that things happen that are not very pretty, and they have to handle it, and so, and that's just kind of the icing of some of those damages, I know George was probably being really nice, um, but we've had them kick the bathroom stall walls in, we have to do all kinds of damage out there. So this is the first year we've just kind of really tracked it and decided to throw some photos at you guys and let you see kind of the things that are going on out there.
Thank you.
Anyway, that's it.
I make a motion that we approve resolution number twenty-five dash ten, adopting revised fee schedules for the city of Guyman, which includes revised soccer field rental rates and utility rates, item six.
Second.
Have a motion and a second? Idson?
Aye.
Hilton?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
We've got four ayes. Uh, agenda item number seven, discussion and possible action to approve or agreement between city of Guyman and Panhandle Area Shelter Workshop for mowing, weeding, and general grounds maintenance. And I believe this is how it's keeping, right, Mr. Shannon?
That's, that's correct, it's, uh, I don't know how long the city of Guyman has, uh, been, uh, uh, the recipient of some, a great group of people that does a lot of our mowing, but, uh, this is very well needed, and, uh, they're doing excellent jobs.
Have a discussion or a motion?
Make a motion to approve the agreement between city of Guyman and Panhandle Area Shelter Workshop for mowing, weeding, and general grounds maintenance, item seven.
Second.
Have a motion and a second? Alvedres?
Aye.
Hilton?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
We've got four ayes. Agenda item number eight is discussion and possible action to approve, approve the certification and assurances of section fifty-three eleven grant for rural areas and federal, federal fiscal year twenty twenty-five funding twenty twenty-six program between Oklahoma Department of Transportation and City of Guyman, the ride. Mr. Shannon, do you want to elaborate?
Um, there again, uh, it's something between the federal government and the Oklahoma Department of Transportation, uh, that helps contribute for the existence of the ride, that, um, I think we've got quite a few buses running around, taking people to work, taking them to school, and, uh, serving that, so, uh, this is something we do every year, just to receive the funding from the federal government and the Department of Transportation.
How many buses do you have right now?
Good question, I think there are four running right now, four to five buses.
And they get utilized a lot?
Oh, from four o'clock in the morning till seven o'clock at night.
Any discussion, possible action?
Make a motion that we approve the certification and assurances of section fifty-three eleven grant for rural areas, federal fiscal year twenty twenty-five funding twenty twenty-six program between Oklahoma Department of Transportation, city of Guyman, the ride, item eight.
Second.
Have a motion and a second? Hilton?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
We've got four ayes. Agenda item number nine, discussion and possible action to authorize advertising for bids on transient hangar project number A zero three dash two four zero zero five three four for Guyman Municipal Airport, Mr. Shannon?
Uh, before us tonight, uh, it's about, about a year, year and a half of work of, uh, from the airport board and, uh, our engineering group, Garver. Fortunately enough, that the Federal Aeronautics Administration has money that they're wanting to give the city of Guyman, uh, and the need that the board, their airport board saw was a transient hangar that would hanger the jet traffic that comes into Guyman. Consider a lot of, uh, jet hangars come in, aircraft from, that's several million dollars. Uh, they fly in daily, they, there are quite a few of them that would spend the night, but there's no hangar space for, of that magnitude and that, to fit that. Federal government come up with a program, we applied, uh, basically, I'm gonna round numbers off, it's a two point one million dollar project, we had to contribute one hundred thousand.
And this will just hold one?
Oh, it'll hold a couple.
Couple?
Yes, of the bigger, the bigger jets now, so if somebody wants to come through and hangar at night with a smaller aircraft, and it'll fit, yeah, that'll do it.
Where are they, standard, uh, eighty? Eighty?
Eighty eight?
Are they eighty by eighty, or eighty by forty?
This hangar?
The hangars out there?
Oh.
The, the current ones.
Well, there's all kinds of shapes of them out there, but this and there, uh, the door space is what's gonna hang here, uh, so.
There's only one big, big one out there.
Yeah, even that north is not gonna, is, is not this big, so, it's gonna be a big old building. But two million dollars worth of hangar.
Yeah.
They're handing it to us, we might as well take advantage of it. And this will be a, we're not gonna, it, it'll, it'll have rent on it, and, uh, so.
It'll what?
It'll have rent, we can rent it nightly.
Gotcha.
Yes.
Make a motion that we authorize advertising for bids on transient hangar project number A zero three dash two four zero zero five three four to Guyman Municipal Airport, item nine.
Second.
Motion and a second? Hilton?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
We've got four ayes. Uh, agenda item number ten is discussion and possible action on electing two nominees for the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group Board of Trustees. Mr. Shannon, do you want to elaborate on what that is?
Well, O-MAG is Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group, that's what the city of Guyman, I call it, uh, the co-op of the, of Oklahoma, it's made up of all municipalities that participate, and, uh, as everybody sits on this board, it's, it's nice to have, uh, representation on that type of a board, so, I think this is year three, they, they really didn't want anybody from Guyman, we're, we're, we're gonna wear them out, hopefully, maybe we'll get somebody on that board for representation for Guyman. Not saying they're not doing a good job for us, but I think, uh, with the proper representation and we could, uh, probably benefit a lot more.
I make a motion that we, uh, elect Mike Shannon, team manager, Guyman, to, uh, Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group Board of Trustees.
Second.
Have a motion and a second? Don't we get two nominees?
I was about to say.
I was gonna go, I was gonna move forward with the other one, uh, later, but I don't, I don't know.
Will we get them all at the same time?
I, I know.
I would.
Everybody, I mean, eight, pick one, I mean, they're all good, especially that last one, he's a pretty good feller, what I hear.
Daniel McClure?
Daniel's a good man.
All right, Mr. Daniel McClure as well, Mayor McLeod. Item ten.
Do we need another second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second? Hilton?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Okay, agenda item number eleven is discussion and possible action to approve budget amendment number one for the general fund for an increase of nineteen thousand seven hundred and forty dollars, Mr. Shannon?
At the time of budget, uh, back in October, we didn't have, uh, uh, figures on, uh, health insurance, life insurance, and this is just to correct that.
Plenar discussion?
It, I, I'm just gonna add one other little, uh, observation, when the city went through a, uh, it used to be a fiscal year, it used to go from June to July, uh, when everything went calendar, it, it creates a problem budgeting sometimes, and, uh, cause the majority of the state, uh, is on that fiscal year from, uh, June to July, so you kind of have to have your thinking cap on, and unfortunately, it wasn't on for me. I made a little mistake, but it's just, but it's, uh, just, uh, to equal the budget out from nineteen thousand.
Make a motion to approve budget amendment one, number one of the general fund for increase of nineteen thousand seven hundred and forty. Second.
Have a motion and a second? Hilton?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
We've got four ayes. Agenda item number twelve is the monthly report from Main Street Guyman, this is Ronnie Paulson, Oklahoma City.
They have another one, didn't we? I know, that was a GWA, excuse me.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Council, Mr. Shannon, um, you should have received the director's report for April, a couple of things I'd like to point out on that director's report, um, our vital volunteer was your, the city's own Bree, for all the work she did in helping us prepare for the city white cleanup. Just a little bit of information on that, I think a big kudos needs to go to the sanitation department, those guys really worked hard out there, they collected fifteen thousand five hundred and sixty pounds of garbage that day, that was brought out there, then that doesn't even count the tree limbs, that's just the, the garbage itself. We had sixty-eight people that helped with the community white cleanup, and, um, three hundred and twenty-one volunteer hours, when you put those together, there were also sixty-three bags of trash that were not even taken to the dump, that were just put in like the Main Street dumpster or other people in town. We still have a few people that are still turning in numbers, so our numbers haven't even quit coming in yet, so it's pretty exciting to see that many people get involved with helping clean up our community. Something else I want to point out on the director's report is, um, as I had said previously, Meta is now giving us a lot more information on who follows our Facebook page, in those last several months, in our top five, uh, top five followers is Amarillo, Texas, which is great, it, it makes me think that people are coming to our casino and then looking at our page to see where they could go eat in Guyman, or what else is going on in Guyman, so it's kind of. going on in Guyman. So it's kind of interesting to follow that. We had fifty new fifty-three new followers just last month. We're just under seventy-one followers on our Facebook page, which shows that the increase is constant with people viewing our page to see what we have going on in the community. We also did I did twenty-seven downtown visits, and one of those was I would want to introduce to you Jose, who is our new Main Street Board Chair for the twenty-twenty-five.
Good evening, council members. My name's Jose Howdy. I am a resident of Guyman for the last twenty-nine years. I am a U.S. Navy veteran, and I am extremely proud to actually be voted into the president position for the Main Street Guyman. I feel it's a very important role for me to kind of show representation in the Main Street kind of district, show other businesses, you know, you guys have a voice, and we are able to kind of make them feel a part of the community, not just a business in Guyman.
So Jose came to me as my board chair and said, what can I do to help you as the board chair? I don't want to just hold committee meetings. And I said, honestly, I could use your bilingual skills. And most of the Main Street District, as most of you would know if you drive our district, is probably a good ninety percent Hispanic-owned businesses. So sometimes there's a little bit of a language barrier when I try to go in and visit with these store members. And so Jose has dedicated one of his days off to going with me into the stores and visiting with them and building that relationship. I want them to feel like they're part of the district, not just I have a store in Guyman. And one of one of our visits was very, very successful. The lady told Jose she she really wanted to be involved with the Christmas event and fiesta and those things, but she didn't know who to talk to, and she didn't speak English very well, so she didn't feel comfortable just going in and saying, hey. And so she was really excited that we're going to be coming in every month or two and just checking in and seeing if there's something that we can do to help her business, or if it's something that I can visit with the city of Guyman about. And so right now, that building those relationships are really important to us. So with having Jose as as my bilingual chair, it's a bonus. So anyway, is there any questions on the director's report or anything we have going on?
What are your next events coming up?
We start farmer's market the first weekend in July. It'll go through the second week of September. We're really excited. We actually have meet me at the market every one plan every Saturday during the farmer's market as well. We're going to plan on doing like we did last year, bringing them down Main Street to grow the crowd down, and that was very successful with our business owners last year. They really appreciated that, and so we have that coming up. And then, of course, Fiesta will be here before we know it. And Kim and I were not here or just gone last month. Kim and I went to National Main Street training in Philadelphia, and I met the Amarillo, Texas Main Street Director and went out of Kansas and got some really great ideas and things that they're doing to try and get people to come downtown and shop. And so we're hoping that we'll be able to start working some of those in. We just finished our Beer and Boss class. We had five people that attended that. Two of them are already business owners, small business owners, one in the District of Quanza, home business, that they just want to make sure they're doing things right and they're doing their taxes right, their insurance, they have enough insurance coverage. And we have two more that are in the process of hopefully opening a business here in Guyman soon. So we're really excited about that. Any other questions?
Ronnie, I really like number twelve. Some of the requested by me.
Was that the one you were asking?
Well, I I know about requested, but I go after what the chambers ask every month, you know, and and some of these questions are, you know, they're they're legit questions, and some of them bring a smile to your face, but one of them, I say, why aren't the police patrolling Main Street in so many eighteen-wheelers daily? Well, I can answer that. That's still a state highway designated as a state highway and interstate commerce, and you cannot restrict that. So but some of these questions are good ones. Can the city get trash cans with locking lids to help on windy days? It would be nice, because I've had them things scare you to death when they pop.
Well, we have a really good incentive program. We need to.
Yeah, but but that's it would be just a little bit different dump. But anyway, I I appreciate you doing that. I I the chamber, I think, still got you beat. She gets some pretty interesting calls.
I like the one that called me and asked me for the chamber's phone number, and I said, how'd you get mine? And they said, I Googled it.
Yeah.
So it's kind of interesting. So luckily, Eric and I will speak to him.
Yeah, anyway.
All right.
It's fun.
Thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Agenda item number thirteen is the monthly report from Guyman Chamber of Commerce. He was hiding, Erica, I can see.
Hiding behind the pillar. Good evening. You guys received my director's report, the newsletter for May, the chamber financials. Happy to answer any questions that you might have regarding anything that you saw there or anything that might be upcoming, so.
You finally breathe, right?
How was Pioneer Days?
Pioneer Days was great. It was fantastic. The the weather was ordered up and cooperated perfectly, so we are very, very thankful for that. We had over seventy-five hundred people attend the rodeo through all four performances. The carnival was the most successful it has been in any of the years that it's been here. Mercantile was busy every time I was out there. So it was a fantastic weekend for the city of Guyman. So fantastic feedback, and everybody had a good time, I think, so.
Good news.
Yes.
I do want to point out in the newsletter, May is Small Business Month, so make sure that you're visiting the multiple small businesses that we have in Guyman. The chamber is promoting spend twenty dollars in a new small business every week, and so look for a small business that maybe you haven't checked out to go and spend that twenty dollars and support our community and the things that are going on here. So any other questions or comments?
I really like your newsletter, so thank you.
Oh, well, thank you. I'm glad you enjoyed it.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I call the meeting for the Guyman City Council adjourned, and we're going to go to the utilities agenda. Guyman Utilities, okay? Call this meeting to order for the Guyman Utilities Authority. We did attendance roll call already. Do we have any public comments for the Guyman Utilities Authority? Okay. Agenda item number four, approve the minutes of the regular meeting of April eighth, twenty-twenty-five.
Make a motion to approve the minutes regular meeting of April eighth, twenty-twenty-five, item four.
Second.
I have a motion in a second?
Hilton?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number five is public notice of increased utility rate resolution number twenty-five zero one, implementing the annual consumer price index, CPI adjustment authorized by resolution in September of twenty-twenty-four. Mr. Shannon? Do you want to elaborate?
Just a little bit. I I want to applaud the the city council for back in September to go ahead and and add that to that resolution to where every year, the federal government comes up with consumer price index figure, and that way, three or four years don't slip away from us, and then we hit the customers with a huge increase. So we're kind of staying up with the time. So I applaud the council for doing that. This year was two-point-nine. I will say that if it goes if I've never seen a negative, but if it goes negative, I would so be it. So but it's two-point-nine.
No discussion, I guess. So we'll go to agenda item number six, discussion of possible action to authorize the mayor to sign the letter certifying matching funds from the Guyman Utilities Authority Fund for the section fifty-three eleven formula grant for rural areas, federal fiscal year twenty-twenty-five for funding the twenty-twenty-six program between Oklahoma Department of Transportation and the City of Guyman, the right. And this just coincides with what we passed in the city council meeting?
Correct.
Correct. I make a motion that we authorize a mayor to sign a letter certifying matching funds from Guyman Utilities Authority Fund for the section fifty-three eleven formula grant for rural areas, federal fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, funding twenty-twenty-six program between Oklahoma Department of Transportation and City of Guyman, the right, item six.
Second.
Have a motion in a second?
Hilton?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number seven is discussion discussion of possible action to approve change order number one for Gates Utilities LLC for an increase of twenty-two thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars on the North Park School Edition Waterline Relocation Project. And this is with the construction of the new project register. Shannon?
Yeah, that's correct. Just like any other contract, and especially when you get into the field, there are changes that need to be made. This is how statute is significant enough to bring back to the council. We've signed off. Staff has signed off, so has the city engineer, and it's just twenty-two thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars for the change. So I mean, there's some particulars to that, but what happened was, I think it was a stem wall or something like that, right where the water meter is supposed to be located, so they had to do a little bit more rerouting, but that was taken care of, so. And I believe the school was provided a copy of that change order, hopefully.
There's a lot going on.
Oh, there is a lot going on. Oh, ain't seen nothing yet.
Any other discussion, possible action?
I make a motion to approve change order number one for Gates Utilities LLC for an increase of twenty-two thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars on the North Park School Edition Waterline Relocation Project, item seven.
Second.
Have a motion in a second?
Hilton?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number eight is discussion of possible action to approve budget amendment number two for the Guyman Utilities Authority Fund sixty-five for an increase of seven-hundred thirty-four thousand and seven hundred and four dollars.
This is just money coming in from Oklahoma Water Resources Board for the loan for the Mesa Water Project, and it had to be accounted for as we're bringing it out of OWRB into our our funds, so we could spend it.
Have any discussion or motion?
Make a motion to approve budget amendment number two for the Guyman Utilities Authority Fund sixty-five for an increase of seven-hundred thirty-four thousand seven hundred and four dollars, item eight.
Second.
Have a motion in a second?
Hilton?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number nine is reports from committees, council members, and the city manager.
I've got six items that I'd like to run through with you.
Okay.
Shouldn't take very long. The financial review, I I sent that to you earlier. I think it was this morning. You'll see that, believe it or not, we're thirty-three point three percent through this year already. Gosh, apparently, and everything looks good, in my opinion. All department heads are within their budget, so.
You want to put that up there?
It it's not attached to that. If anybody in the public would like a copy of that, just say, and we'll get that to you ASAP. This should be on there. It should be on. We'll just put it on the webpage tomorrow or tonight or probably tomorrow. Looked like revenue over expenses of April year-to-date, revenue of thirteen million, expenditures of ten, so that's that's good news. Sales tax is about normal, so we're just a little behind from what we were a year ago, but about, oh, six, seven, eight, eight percent higher. I don't know where that went, but about six or eight percent higher than it was a year ago overall. So we're in good financial shape as of today and the way the rest of the year looks. So I'm I'm really pleased, so. And there again, we can have that financial report on the webpage. Be looking for it tomorrow. That'd be all right. Mesa Water Project, we've constantly working on that. I want to run over a timeline, basically, and this is on the webpage. We're at being close to a hundred percent design, which will allow us to start submitting bids in sometime around July for Phase One and Phase Two. Phase One is the drilling of the wells, of the seven wells. Phase Two is the getting that water into town. So everything is still on schedule to have water to Guyman in October of twenty-twenty-five, so.
Twenty-twenty-five?
Twenty-six, excuse me. I was wanting a haircut quicker. Okay, I stand corrected.
Happy Halloween.
Yeah. Third item is our water conservation report. I want to applaud the citizens of Guyman. We're under a proclamation that just basically mandates that you water on Saturdays and Sundays. Our water usage has been averaged about seventy percent. I mean, that's a seven-day average. It's a little higher during the week. On the weekend, it's down because Seaboard is not in production on Saturdays and Sundays, but thank you, the citizens of Guyman, for doing your part. So we'll just see what the hot weather brings here in the next this afternoon and tomorrow. The way it looks is ninety-seven degrees while it goes, so. But with the rains, everything's been looking fairly good. We are we did have a well come back on, the well number twenty-five, I believe, that we had to shut down because of the high nitrates. It's going to come back on, to my understanding, but not at the capacity, because we can't pump it at full capacity because of the nitrates. We're blending it with the other water, bringing the nitrates down, so we'll have probably two-hundred-and-fifty gallon a minute, three-hundred gallon a minute out of seven-hundred ballpark, so that will help us a little bit. Our water line relocation, we just approved the change order for the school. Tracy, am I right? They did the final inspection today, and everything looked good to their consulting engineers. So should be turning out back on by?
Friday.
Friday. Good. So super. So that means construction can start on the new school, so. I'll just take this moment. I appreciate Carrie, you being here and the school itself for working with the city of Guyman. This kind of was brought up the last moment. We got through it. Everything is done, and we're ready for construction. So I think probably right on your timeline, I think, is kind of what I've been hearing. So anyway, we appreciate your cooperation. The other water project is the Department of Transportation Highway sixty-four project that we're having to relocate our water lines for on Twelfth Street or Highway six to four, four twelve. I think we got about three to four more weeks on that for completion on that. That was something ODOT had mandated us to go ahead and remove those utilities immediately, because they wanted to start. Well, as soon as we bid it out and started it, they pushed the project off to twenty-thirty-one. So we're going to be we'll have all the utilities out of their road for twenty-thirty-one, and that's when they planned redoing everything from Highway fifty-four up to Main and over by the bank of the Panhandle, redoing that that section of highway. Our see drainage plan on the Rio Vista addition has completed. I think we had a gentleman address the council about two, three months ago, and we're taking stamps or taking a stance to basically reroute some water by probably something that should have been done in nineteen-eighty when the development was was put in. The city was a little lax on development standards, I'm assuming, but we're taking some action to try to divert the water coming across Savakin Lots and drinking it down Twenty-first Street, I believe. We submitted for bids to get valley crossing and some curb and gutter done. Hopefully, we'll try to alleviate the water going down Mr. Kelly's Alley and through his yard. But there's some other options we're also looking at, but we did invest in a topography of the all the Rio Vista Estates and coming and developing a plan, because it has problems up here. It has problems up here, so when it rains. I'm going to go back to the school project. The construction company, Mr. Hall Construction Company, we we met with those gentlemen first this week, I think it was, maybe the last, I don't sometime the last seven days. They they made a request on North Crumley. I call it the little radius there. They asked to close the street during construction for safety reasons. Unbeknownst to me, the thing's been closed anyway for about a month or two, and we hadn't had any response and no complaints or anything like that. So we're going to go ahead and let we're going to close that little radius just west of the the tennis courts there for trucks can come, turn in. There'd be nothing stacked there. They're not going to use it as a stack yard. They're not gonna use it as a stack yard. It's just mainly trucks in and out, in and out and, because school's gonna be here before we know it. It's still, school's gonna start. North Park's gonna be rather busy. And so we gave them permission to close that street off. It'll, it'll be closed with temporary closings. If something would happen, we need to open the street. It'd take minutes to open it, so. So kudos to Hall. I, I don't know the correct name or your construction people, but they're, they've been real easy to visit with and, and not afraid to call City Hall and ask questions. We like that, so.
Joe D. Hall.
Joe D. Hall, thank you. And with that, Madam Vice Mayor, that's all I have.
All right, do you have any reports from any council members? Mr. Alvedres? Mr. Heidson? Mr. Hilton?
No.
No? Okay. I just want to say thanks to everybody that helped with Pioneer Days. A lot of volunteers go into that. And if you're one of those or one of the ones that worked it, thank you, because it's, it's a huge event and it cannot happen without all the people that had something to do with it, be it the days of or leading up to. Our community members that cleaned up really well for they and even the schools that did that with their, their students. Thank you so much, because you guys are what makes our community look and shine like it does when it does, so that's all I gotta say. And if I don't have any other thing, call this meeting adjourned. Have a good night.
I love, I knew how to turn this thing off.
I think it's the last one, so very bottom.
Yeah, I got it. It's very bottom one.